As we're getting ready, sir, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Perfect. I will mute.
All right. I'll try to get in front of it. Okay. Okay. So we will call this regular city council meeting to order for May 27, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Just a reminder for council members and even those in the audience to please silence, put away your cellphones. And if you have business to take it outside the room. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Graver?
Here.
Mayor Carrington?
Here.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
We're all here.
All right. Next, if you could rise and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Jude Billiford to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the election certification. We need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
I still move?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there, we've also got Joe Wellers here. She's the Canvas Board Chairperson. So I don't know if the council has any questions. Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just questions and kind of clarification of the process that went on. And first off, congratulations on retaining your mayor's seat. So there was a lot of numbers out there. There was 389 total vote number, a 407 vote number, and a 398 vote number. And what the clerks said out today did a great job of showing how it arrived back at that 398 total. But I had two calls from people that read the Frontiersman and said the basics of why do the numbers not add up to 100%? And, you know, I think that if we're going to land on the fact that there were 398 votes total, especially since they're highlighted in yellow when you go to the city website, it ends up at a 54.55 and a 43.24, which doesn't get you to 100%. If you divide those numbers into 398, if we can agree that's the total number of votes, the actual numbers would be 55.78% no and 44.22% yes. And that way it would, it would look legitimate for when people go and look in the, in the record books and in history. They wouldn't say, why were these numbers 54 and 43? One can get there if they're a number wonk and do inside baseball and divide it into the 407. But they shouldn't have to. I mean, it should be if we're going to settle on that there were 398 legitimate votes cast, and I don't want to start any accusations of any conspiracies at all. If we're going to get to that's the number of votes that were cast, I think we should change the percentages so they match up to 100%. So whether it's reporting in the Frontiersman or whether it's somebody looking a year or two down the road, they don't go, why do these numbers add up to 97.79%? And yeah, I know I'm a number wonk, but I got two calls from people that read the Frontiersman and were concerned about just the overall percentages. So I would suggest, I know it's not on this piece of paper that was provided and I appreciate all the background, but for the website itself and for historical sake, I think the numbers should address the percentages that add up to 100%. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yeah, thank you. If, I was hoping to see if we could just kind of get a, just a verbal explanation as for why the, the total number of votes cast changed from the initial counting to what the final was. It's, I also had a lot who asked me about that, and we just want to make sure we clear the error on it. So I was hoping to see if there's like an explanation as to why that is, just so we can make sure that public everyone knows.
You want to, Joe, would you like to come forward and? Sure. Let me see, this is Joe Weller from the Canvas Board. She's the chairperson for the Canvas Board. Welcome. And you might have to push the buttons on the bottom, like hold it for three, four seconds.
Excellent.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah, you probably have to bring it nice and close. There you go.
So my name is Joe Weller. I was the chairperson for the Canvas Board, which takes care of going through the question ballots and the early vote ballots and the special need ballots. Each one of those is isolated in an envelope. And before we count those ballots, we have to make sure that they haven't signed the register and gone through the regular voting process and voted twice and that sort of thing. So that process has to go, go on before those ballots are counted. So the, the first batch of numbers that was released was just the days of the polls. And so people go in, put their ballots in the, in the machine, it counts, and those results are immediately available. And the, the Canvas Board doesn't meet until Thursday and count on Friday. And so the final ballots then are counted and the full numbers released. Does that answer the question?
Deputy Mayor, do you have a follow-up?
No, that, thank you very much. So it, it sounds like they just weren't all counted at that time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council, have any other questions or comments? Councilmember Alkantra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Weller, for being here tonight. So does it make sense, though, that the number should be divided into the actual total votes, the 398, instead of a, a higher number that didn't get counted? Because that number that's reported on the website, it just doesn't add up to 100%. That's why I was just curious.
I understand.
You do it that way.
I don't deal with percentages.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much, Joe. All right, are we ready to vote then? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Okay. Six one, passes.
All right. Next is approval of the agenda, which includes Action Memorandum Number 25-047, directing the city manager to notify the state of Alaska of the city council's statement of non-objection of the Palmer Bar license renewal, and 25-051, informing the mayoral nomination of Daniel Perrion to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Seat F, with a term expiring December 2028. And those will be approved as the agenda's approved. Move to approve. Okay. That was Cooper.
I'll second it.
So it's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the owners of Palmer Bar being here, and I just, I can't remember the precise vernacular of a former council member best, but I'd ask the city clerk, do we have any correspondence, either way, either good or bad, before we approve that on consent agenda?
Madam Clerk?
We receive no comments.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the item under new business is a good idea, and I have a few questions on the agenda process. I am curious, though, because the second to last page of the agenda, sorry, I'd be talking too vily. The second to last page of the agenda, I believe, let me double check that. Yes, is a letter or an email, I guess, a copy of an email from Councilwoman Hudson to the clerk. And they had requested an item placed on the agenda for this meeting, and I didn't see that item on the agenda. And I'm just curious why that is.
Madam Clerk?
The request was for, to review the role of the clerk. That was how I read it, and that's how I had it on there. When I gave the information to the agenda setting team, and then a few days later, two councilmembers suggested that maybe it would be wise to choose to do all three people that work for the council at the same time, instead of just the book. So that's the two requests that are here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is, according to my understanding, this was not the only, that request was clarified later to mean a, a review of your contract with the city and review of your performance of your contract. And I was wondering if Councilwoman Hudson or Councilmember Alkantra would speak to that, because that was my understanding.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Graver, I sent this on May 1st, asking for a review. I thought that evaluation and review were kind of synonymous terms in the corporate world. I guess not. And then at the last meeting on May 13th, Councilman Alkantra and I then turned in a form at the end of the meeting specifying exactly what we were asking for. And I also said in this email, as you can see, if you have any additional information, is needed to proceed, just meaning if you have any questions about what I'm asking, feel free to reach out. There was no questions that were asked about what I was asking for in this email. And then we did clarify at the end of last meeting, and it still showed up as, on this agenda as a review of the role of what their jobs were. So we did clarify that, and it still wasn't added.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess this is directed to the clerk then. Madam Clerk, did you receive that updated request in time to have it placed on this agenda or?
But I did, it did still say the role of the clerk. When I asked for clarification, Councilmember Hudson, she said, well, she never used the words, those words were used executive session, maybe terminology to me in either piece of paper. So I asked her, and she said, well, it's executive session. I said, well, about that, about having your role? And she said, I said, well, you already gave me a review in January, so I'm confused as to why you're doing this. And so she called over Councilmember Alkantra. This Councilmember Alkantra said, I said, are you asking for an executive session? And he said, I do not care. He said, I do not like the idea of the clerk acting like she works for certain councilmembers. That's it. And that's, he's shaking his head, and that's what he said from my recollection. So I took that to mean the discussion would be in public. That's my understanding. That was just my understanding.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty tired of executive sessions as a general rule. I mean, if, if the person who is being reviewed wants an executive session, I'm okay with that. But no, I think the idea was that we're going to get to a point, and whether it's through what we're doing tonight or some other method, where the folks that work for the city council know that they work for the city council and not for one individual or two individuals. And that's not, it's, it can be addressed to all of them. I, I don't know how many executive sessions we need to have, hopefully very few. I think we need to usher in a newer era of transparency and not have executive sessions as a general rule, unless someone really thinks that they are necessary. But I do think, I thought it was clear that what we wanted, but whether it's, I saw the email came out May 1st, the other item from yourself and Councilmember Cooper came out May 6th. I say we proceed with what we have, see where it takes us, and we'll see if this, you know, has to have a emergency meeting or a special meeting, and that's what we'll have to do.
Okay. Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just frustrated along the same lines, because there have been a few things that I've requested to be on a future agenda, and it's been pushed back. And so that's why I'm saying I'm, I'm comfortable with this new business item, and I'm looking forward to discussing that, because there are a few things I want to bring up. But I also just wanted to say, as an employee of the city council, if, if someone's requesting of you a performance review, whether or not you've had one recently, it's your boss asking for that. And so I'd appreciate it if you listened to the request and do what needs to be done to put it on the agenda. And instead of frankly coming up with excuses of, you know, that it's something different than what you're being asked for. Thank you.
I don't think it's.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I don't think it's appropriate this time to, to try to denigrate one of the employees of the city council. Our job right now is to approve the agenda or not approve the agenda. And that's where we are. It's not to point fingers and say, I don't, you know, you work for us and, and what we want you to do, we don't want you to do it. That's not what we're here for. Right now, we're here to approve the agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. For what, I do agree with what Councilwoman Graver is saying, and it does have to do with the approval of the agenda, because why would we approve an agenda item that's not what the council requested and asked for and clarified for multiple times? And then two other council members came in later, then asking for the same thing that the clerk was asking for, to solidify against what two council members already requested and clarified for. So this does have to do with the approval of the agenda, because it's not what council members asked for. And further to clarify what Councilwoman Graver was saying, is that there's legislation from 4925 that, that Councilwoman Graver and I have sent to the clerk's office to be put on this agenda, and it's still not on this agenda, and it wasn't on the last agenda either. So why would we approve an agenda when agenda items from certain council members are refusing to show up, but agenda items from other council members are showing up just fine before the legislative date?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Cooper?
On the point of order, that the agenda is to be approved, and when it comes to the item, for example, in this case, Item L, that's when the opportunity is to either table it, review it, discuss it, or remove it from the agenda. It's not at the beginning when you're at the, at the part to approve the agenda. You approve the agenda, and when you get to that point, that is when you make the discussion and make the move, move an order to move it off the table or postpone it indefinitely.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's simply not true. If you wanted to move Action Memorandum 2549 before approving the agenda, we would ask to take that off now. We wouldn't wait, approve an agenda, and then get to Action Memorandum 2549 and then approve it. So that's, that may have been how it was done in 2003, but that's not the way you run a business, not the way you run a agenda, is if you have a problem with something on the agenda, you should remove it before you approve the agenda. Not after you get, if, if I had a problem with any of these action memorandum items, I would ask to remove them before approving the agenda. That's just common sense.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. And I also would like to clarify that the mayor did put out a statement in his mayor's report, I believe it was about two months ago, asking that the council clarify the reasoning behind their vote before they make the vote. So I think that's what's happening now, is, is we're following what the mayor's asked us to do. Thank you.
All right, so. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this seems like a pretty contentious item in the agenda, I move to move that agenda item off our agenda. Going up to where it is. And we can always ask in council comments to move that, that item for the review to being a special meeting. Everyone trying to gauge the support of the council, just taking that off of our agenda and just move that to a special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of keeping that item, sorry, agenda item, because, like I said, there's a few things I would like to address, and I think that it would be helpful if it was a public address, that, or a public addressing of those issues, so.
All right.
Then I withdraw my question.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to clarify with Councilwoman Graver that I am in support of having this conversation. I think it's just clarifying before we make a vote that this agenda is not what was requested.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for the approval of the agenda, please?
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Six one.
Okay. Next is Communications and Appearances. We don't have any listed city manager's report.
Hi, yes, thank you. So I've been busy the last few weeks, and in collaboration, collaboration with the clerk's office, we've implemented and updated internal routing for FOIA and public records requests. And effective immediately, all records will be directed to the city manager's office, where they'll be logged and routed to the appropriate departments for processing, with the exception of the police department records, which will continue to be managed by the Palmer Police Department. This change reflects the practical reality that most records are maintained within individual departments rather than solely by the clerk's office. The clerk's office remains a key partner in this process, and so does the legal department. And they will continue to review all requests to ensure compliance and applicable laws prior to any records being released. On a positive note, the invitation to bid 25-02CD for the library demolition and site clearing services was issued on May 21st with bids due at 2:00 PM on June 11th. This project is a significant step toward preparing the site for future redevelopment and aligns with our broader strategic objectives. The insurance settlement related to the library is nearing completion, and all the process has been lengthy and complex. We are close to a final resolution. Once finalized, I will provide an update. In the meantime, the team and I will begin drafting the request for proposal for the reconstruction of the library, representing a major milestone in restoring this facility. This week, I'm also completing the interviews for the human resources manager position, and we had a strong candidate pool, and I will narrow down the final field for interviews or an offer. Recruitment also remains active for both the community development director and police chief positions, and these key leadership roles are a high priority as we continue to seek exceptional candidates who can move our forward city, our city forward. Be on the lookout for our public works crew, who are fully engaged with seasonal maintenance projects, including street striping, curb painting, and crosswalk repainting. These activities are critical to enhancing safety during increased summer activities. Additionally, the first quarter 2025 financials are now available, and Gina is present here this evening to answer any questions that you may have regarding that report. And lastly, as a sort of a procedural change, and with the council's approval, I would like to bring directors, department directors up here to present a 10 to 15 minute update on a rotating basis or as needed. These updates are designed to keep the council informed of department activities, challenges, and progresses, especially as we go into the demolition and the reconstruction of the library. Of course, should you, the council prefer to have these be delivered in another format, such as an informal work session where we can have back and forth question and answer phase, I would be happy to adjust that approach accordingly as well. Thank you for your continued support.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. City manager's are a great, good report. Congratulations on finishing your first month on the job. I do have some questions on the financial report, so is that something we want to bring Director Davis up? Or we just throw him out at you and see if, see what transpires?
I think it would be best to direct it towards Ms. Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Gina, should I come forward? There you go. Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Davis. So the first question I have is on, on page 25, on the, just kind of the overall, the overall money pool, if you will, and the daily money and the amount of money we have with First National Bank Alaska and then some money with Alaska Municipal League. I'm, I'm just curious, is it a liquidity issue, or why would we have 4.0, a little over 4.1 million invested getting us 0.12 of a percent when we could stair-step CDs, as you have later on in that same spreadsheet? You stair-step CDs grabbing anywhere between 3.5 and 5.35%? It just seems, unless that's the money we use month to month to write paychecks and pay contractors and do other things, I'm just curious why so much of our money is, is with that pooled investment? And could we ever expect better returns than barely over a tenth of a percent?
I apologize, councilmembers. I believe that is an incorrect figure. We make a lot more than that off that investment pool.
That's, well, that's good to hear.
And I will, I will get you a corrected number. I apologize.
Could I do one more?
Yes.
Thank you. I gotta, as I'm scrolling, to try to find an next spreadsheet I wanted to ask you about. I, I remember it vividly, but I gotta see if I can find it to tell you where it's at. It, it's basically the month-by-month tax collections. And I was, I was a little surprised, more than a little, I guess, that, that the Christmas month wasn't our highest month of, of tax revenue, that it's actually September. And I'm just wondering if there's a, you know, my, my wild guess would say it's got something to do with the Alaska State Fair, but it, because it seems consistent that the, that the biggest revenue month is September. It's page 59, sorry. So when you provided that spreadsheet, and thank you very much for it, and you look back, to be honest, even year over year, it shows, at least in 20, 22 through 24, September being our biggest month, which just, just as a person who kind of follows trends and economics and other things, I was just kind of like, wow, I was surprised it wasn't either October with PFDs, in spite of what they may or may not be, or Christmas time. And I'm just wondering, September traditionally has been our high water month, and is that, has to do with the state fair? Or does it have to do with something completely different than that?
Well, so this, technically, the, the revenue for September is actually what was reported for August. And so like, the last, so as far as like the state fair sales tax, that is due to the city by October 31st each year. Sometimes folks pay it earlier, sometimes folks pay it after October 31st. But a lot of it has to do with, you know, a busy summer, you know, our summer months are a lot, a lot. a busy summer, you know, our summer months are a lot, a lot busier, like July and August, with the amount of activities that go around and along in the city. That's part of it. As far as twenty-two and twenty-three in December, actually, twenty-three, we had a pretty bad windstorm right before Christmas, so that was, that didn't help the coffers during that timeframe. That's why twenty-three was down for December.
Mr. Mayor, just one last.
Sure.
So just for my edification, then, the, the numbers in the September column, using the twenty-two through twenty-four, and the numbers that are seven-digit numbers instead of six-digit numbers, those are actually, the way it works, I think I heard you correctly, is that, that's actually revenue from August one to August thirty-one, the numbers in the September column?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Good, good to learn, always. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I started by, yeah, saying, thank you, thank you, Chair, for giving us this update. I know, like, with me, I always pay my sales tax like the last week, so I don't know why I always do that, but it's something I always do. And to our city manager, I just had a question. So we were talking about staff updates, we were talking about having that just throughout, like, all the, the department heads coming to the council. Just wanted to make sure I heard that right.
Sure, and a rotating basis. So if one department warrants more representation in front of the council, I'll have that director up there. That's why I mentioned the library project. We'll probably have community development here more often, and of course, we can rotate that out to the airport, public works, finance if we need to, and then there might be just a city manager's report. But the goal is to increase collaboration between the departments and increase transparency.
I think that's an excellent idea, because I believe we asked, I mean, I remember asking that a couple of weeks ago, when it was sold as a consent city code, and I was going, what do you mean it's consent city code? So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I looked in code, and I didn't see anything that would prohibit me from doing that underneath the manager's report.
Okay, well, thank you so much for putting that.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I also think that's a great idea, and I'm looking forward to staying more informed and up to date on what's going on. So, thank you.
All right, no other questions from council? Thank you, Gina, for enlightening us. Uh, next is the mayor's report. I've got a written report there, and also, I don't think, I don't think I mentioned in there that we hosted the mayor's managers' meeting out at the FIRE Training Center, I think it was. And that's with the borough and city mayors from Wasilla and Houston. And also, I participated in the Memorial Day Ceremony yesterday on behalf of the city. So is there any questions for me for my report? Councilmember Alcantra.
No real questions, Mr. Mayor. Just really cool to see the Sean Patterson story. I had seen it a couple of times on Facebook and other social media, and really applaud everybody who was, who was a part of that. So, yeah, that's one that hitched in the feels for sure. So, thank you.
I even use that as an example of, with the Memorial Day Ceremony of, you know, how do you, how do you honor those that you've, you know, lost? And describe that, because I know a lot of those bikers, the thirty-seven bikers are vets, and so that's part of their way of doing it. So I, I use that as an example. Okay, next is city clerk's report.
For those of you that are interested in running for office on the city council, candidacy packets will be available at eight AM July twenty-first, fifty-four days from today. Again, that's all I have for the moment.
All right, any questions for the clerk? Councilmember Alcantra.
Without a calendar in front of me, and then that would make the closing date August first, is that what you said? Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to ask the clerk, when the last date is for the council to get any items for a charter change on the ballot?
I believe that would be a meeting in July. I can get a firm date for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Madam Attorney, do you have a report for us?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. First, I've sent a working draft from the directive to draft a potential legislation related to banning camping within city limits after the city of Brant's Pass versus Johnson Supreme Court ruling. And I sent that draft to Councilwoman Graver, who was the individual tasking me with it, sorry, with the council, when I was originally directed that, sent it to her for consideration. Secondly, I was informed on Friday that it was requested by council members and placed upon the agenda to discuss the roles of the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. So I worked this past weekend to prepare a reference packet of the elements of each role, its authorities and duties outlined by code, and some potential questions that may still remain that the code is silent to. This has been reviewed by the city manager to reference her new public records request process. As there's been some confusion and questions as to what those roles are, how they work, and how they interact, I think this is a great opportunity for discussion and to bring clarity. The packet was sent to the council members, and copies are available. It's for informational purposes only, to assist the council in their discussions, and copies of these reference packets are available on the side table.
All right. So any questions from the council for the attorney at this time? Okay, next, we have audience participation. Please sign in, state your name, and three minutes per person. Council meeting rules protect your rights to testify and ensure that those attending can express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. No disruption to city business or threats of any kind will be allowed. Individuals who cannot follow these guidelines will be removed, and any threats against others could result in criminal prosecution. We will open audience participation. Do you have anybody wishing to speak to the council?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Jackie. Go for it. I have an election recount application right here, signed by ten residents. Do you know what it says in it? It says, "A defeated candidate may file an application with the clerk for a recount of the votes from any particular precinct, etc., etc. By filing this application with the clerk at any time before 5:00 PM on the day of certification of election results, or by delivering this application for recount to the council at its meeting to certify the election results." But you certified the election results already. I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. You see, on the day of the election, and for the two days following, there were only a hundred and forty-nine early ballots issued. A hundred and, or a hundred and fifty-nine, a hundred and fifty-nine early ballots were issued. On the day that the official results came out on Friday, two more, a hundred and sixty-one. Can I ask, please, how two more early voters got ballots after an election? You know, if you want to be trustworthy, you have to put out trustworthy numbers and results, if you want to be trusted. And you know, when, when you have, when you have rules like this from the DOT... This order specifies the signs cannot be larger than four feet by eight feet in size on public lands with DOT frontage, but the order does not allow a political sign to be placed within a staid highway right-of-way, and it does not authorize other forms of outdoor advertising. And yet, vote no, vote no, we're on the corners on DOT property. And you know, I called down to the community development department, and I told them, because I got in trouble for this three years ago, so I knew this existed. And she told me I had to prove that it was illegal. And she would have someone go out there and look. And you know what? The signs were still there at the end of the election day. Election interference started from day one, it continued on day one. And when the candidate, the person who's being recalled, didn't even put the required epoch, Alaska Public Office signage, verbiage on the signs. And then when you handed him the paperwork showing him that he didn't, at his hearing, he said, the reason he didn't look at it is because I harangue him. Okay, if truth is called haranguing, then yes, I'm gonna harangue from the top of the rooftops, because everything I've told you is true. This was an election interference total. It's a total election fraud. How do you have two ballots issued after the election to early voters? Anyone?
That's your time.
Thank you.
Westarts, I just want to say thank you from Ian Sherman for the renewing our license. Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation? All right, we'll close. Audience participation. Uh, next is public hearings. We've got resolution number twenty-five dash zero-two-four, a resolution of the Palmer City Council recognizing the Gold Star families and honoring veterans of recent military conflicts. Do the public hearing. Okay, so we'll open this public hearing for resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-four. Anyone wishing to speak to this can please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council for this resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-four? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions from council on this? Okay, oh, Council, Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say this is a excellent resolution. I'm glad it got put forth to be here in front of the council. It's something we need to do every year. Thank you.
All right. There's nothing else. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Are you unanimous?
Okay. Next is resolution number twenty-five dash zero-two-one, a resolution of the Palmer City Council authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement required by the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation in connection with a fully forgiven loan in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for the Headworks Rehabilitation Project. We'll open public hearing for that. Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution can come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Councilmember Alcantra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of, one question for three resolutions here. If I understand it from the breakdown provided to us, twenty-five hundred dollars per resolution on the first two, thirty-seven fifty on the third one, and those payments come out as we, as you move forward in the process. So basically, these, these grants are fully forgivable loans, just have a little bit of, a little half percent skin in the game in each, each one of these, I see, so, thank you. Making sure I understood it right.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a question about the D. You know, it says on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five is when we approved this, to get started. I'm wondering why it takes from February to here before we can get the stuff working. I don't know if Jude needs to answer that, or...
Madam Manager?
I don't know the details surrounding why it took so long, but my assumption would be paperwork between the state and city. Sometimes it just takes longer than we want it to. If there's Ms. Gina or Jude have any more context of that, they're welcome to come up and provide that.
You, okay, Councilmember Cooper? Okay. Councilmember Alcantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I would just suggest that, uh, being allowed to apply for a loan three months ago, and then having a letter seven weeks ago and getting it approved today, actually, with grant work through the State of Alaska, doesn't, doesn't seem to be that, that long of a process. So I'm glad both our former city manager and our current one were able to, to get this stuff accomplished. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, just another follow-up. I don't know, do we, if we need to go back in, it talks about any dispersment addresses the borrower will be sent to, and it lists our interim city manager. I don't know if we have to go back and change the names.
Madam Manager?
We do not. I can simply do a pen and ink change and cross out his name and put my name and my title.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Are you unanimous?
All right, next is resolution number twenty-five dash zero-two-two, a resolution of the Palmer City Council authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement required by the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation in connection with a fully forgiven loan in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for the New Well and Wellhouse Project. We'll open the public hearing for this resolution. Anyone wishing to speak to this can come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
All right. Uh, last resolution, number twenty-five dash zero-two-three, a resolution of the Palmer City Council authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement required by the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation in connection with a fully forgiven loan in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand for the Reservoir One Upgrade Project. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution can come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Are you unanimous?
All right. Uh, next, we have action memorandum, but I think maybe we'll take a short recess. I know. I drank too much water, sorry.
Good break in the action.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. We'll call ourselves back to order. Uh, next is action memorandum Number 25-048, authorizing utility water connection for 871 South Blunk Street, Palmer, Alaska, located outside Palmer City limits. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve? Second.
Jude, you just take your pick.
Just choose one. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this matters, but I noticed it wasn't just a single mistake. Um, the name of the street is misspelled, I believe. I think there's a C before the K. I may be wrong, but I was looking it up to see where it was located, and that's what I saw. So unless, I may be wrong, but...
So that's, is that Google Maps? Where, where?
Oh, we just saw the packet.
Well, okay. Oh, there should be a C in there? Okay.
I don't know what that is, but I'm sure it's...
So we'll, uh, we'll state that that will be corrected in all the necessary places. Uh, any other questions? Councilmember Alkantra?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I catch numbers, Graver catches spelling. Um, but, um, I did want to ask, just 'cause I'm curious, this is, this is, uh, next door to the church that I attend, or the old, the old location is next door, not the, not the new one. I'm just curious, what does it, what does it mean when it says, uh, "Connection at 2820 South Market will be properly abandoned"? I mean, it's, uh, I'm thinking like, you know, oil spout's going off or something? Is it just the cap of water?
Madam Manager, shall we drag someone forward?
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
Yes, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Jude Billefer. So there is a procedural requirement from D E C when a, uh, connection, and with city code, when a connection is abandoned, how it is terminated, where it is terminated, and the parts and pieces used for that termination. So that somebody can't just come back up and connect to it, um, willy-nilly, if you will. So that is a supervised decommissioning process. And as mentioned in the packet, the owners just want to move their location. That's why it will be abandoned, because council approved, they're out of city, then it's original connection.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? Thanks, Jude. All right. Um, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please, for this AM 25-048?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is action memorandum 25-049, authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number One, additional construction administration with HDL Engineering Consultants for the Fireweed Ave. and Colony Way intersection improvement project in the amount not to exceed $49,465. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Uh, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I must make an assumption this road is gonna be closed the entire time. And so, um, I guess, uh, request I would have is I hope that we get this information out, you know, either on our utility bills or however we can notify the city on our, uh, obviously on our website, your website, all the different ways that we can notify them, that it's gonna be closed for, you know, th- three months or so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, uh, Councilmember Cooper, that, that is correct. And so it will be advertised on the city's website, on Public Works, we will advertise it in the newspaper, and we'll also have, um, signage around town. So our target start time, I believe I mentioned this before, but just as a reminder, is 16 June. That is, uh, Monday after Colony Days, so we don't interfere with Colony Days, and, 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 our target time will be, it will be completed, not a target time, it will be completed before school starts. And yes, we will have the road clo- close that small section there of Fireweed, but the detour's a very easy detour for folks to go around.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right. Um, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please? Thanks, Jude.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Okay, six more?
All right. Uh, next is action memorandum 25-050, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Affinity Security Services to perform a cybersecurity risk assessment using the funds received from the 2022 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program not to exceed $33,975. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve?
Second.
All right. Is there any questions or comments from council? All right. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, next, there's no unfinished business, new business, review of the role of the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney with the council. I believe, um, everyone got a copy of, uh, our attorney had put together a summary report on the roles of city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. Uh, do we wanna proceed from this point? Deputy Mayor, Jude?
Uh, I would suggest that we move into committee of the whole.
Okay.
Support that, or second that?
Second that? Okay. Um, we vote on that to move into committee. Okay. Any other comments, questions? So, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for going into committee of the whole to discuss and review the role of the city clerk, city manager, city attorney with the council.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
Okay. So we're in the committee of the whole? Who would like to start? Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did we have a process set out for this, or is it just, are we speaking about things we're concerned about, or?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, what process we, we have for this, so, you wanna start?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to discuss the agenda process. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, in the code, and I believe it's, uh, 2.04.100, uh, PMC, under A, it says, "The agenda for each meeting shall be prepared by the manager and the clerk after consultation with the mayor. The agenda shall include any discussion item requested in writing and signed by the mayor or two council members. The request shall be made to allow the timeframes of PMC 2.04.075." So my concern lately, and I will give an example, um, give me a second to find my email. So back in April, um, Councilwoman Hudson and I were given a draft, I believe, legislation on, uh, an item that we'd requested from the attorney. Um, and we, I emailed, um, the city clerk with that, a copy of that legislation, and told her that I was, um, I approved of the draft and that I would like to see it on the next agenda. And then Councilwoman Hudson also replied in that email and concurred with me. And actually Deputy Mayor Tudor also, um, said that he would like to see it on the next agenda, just to kind of put his voice in there. And we did not receive a response from the clerk on that. And then I think this week, Councilwoman Hudson sent an email to the clerk and asked, she said, "I'm following up. We haven't seen this item placed on a council agenda." And the clerk, the clerk's reply was that she sent a separate email to the entire council and said, um, "Please see the attached emails on how to write a legislation document." And her thought was that the attorney is supposed to put in that item for us, if I'm understanding your words correctly. But after reading that code, that's not the process that we're supposed to go with, and if two council members agree on an item in writing, then that item should be on the next agenda. And so to not receive a reply until we reach out, and then to have the reply sent to us, to the entire council, that this is the process and we're not doing it correctly, I'm just really confused, because we've done it that way in the past, and, um, we've talked about it, and everything was done correctly as far as I know. And, um, I'm just curious why that item did not get put on an agenda.
I can answer.
Madam Clerk?
My understanding is the, the city attorney was tasked with writing that legislation and following it all the way through. I'm at the very end of the process as a co-leader of the packet. So my understanding was that the city attorney was tasked with that, the city attorney, we would help her, I sent her the template, I sent her, um, how to write a legislation document, and that she would be putting it in routing for review by the, uh, finance director and then the city manager, and then it comes to the after that, at the very end. So that was my understanding of the normal process that directors use and I use and everyone uses.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Graver?
And also, yeah.
Oh.
Um, she can go first if she wants to.
Sure. Madam Attorney?
No, and I, I'm glad we can discuss this. So, um, going back to the agenda, the way I read it, you know, traditionally, the city manager brings forth all the legislation, which is recommended on behalf of the administration. And then the city clerk brings back the legislation that is sponsored by or requested on behalf of the council. It's wholly inappropriate to have the city attorney, um, recommend or put forward legislation of any kind. I'm not the sponsor, the city attorney would never be the sponsor of legislation. The whole purpose of code ha- having that two council members instead of the entire council, but two council members to be able to task the city attorney or the city manager or the clerk to draft something, I'm, I'm, the scope is given to me how to draft on what the specific points are. I'm then drafting according to Supreme Court updates, making sure there's no civil rights issues, and draft the legislation, and then that is given back to the council members, um, who are the sponsors of it. And then according to code, that is then given to the city, uh, clerk to be placed upon an agenda. You know, it says two items in writing, signed by the council members, signed by two council members. And so, um, and that would be like, I, I mean, this is modeled after any kind of legislative process. So in, you know, the legislature, you have bills that are drafted, um, and directed to be drafted from Ledge Legal, uh, that puts it together, and then that bill is given to the sponsoring legislators, they bring the bill forward, not the Ledge Legal, they never put that forward. It's, you know, it's a, the city attorney is supposed to review legislations for legality, not to advocate or recommend policy. Um, that's the job, uh, the city clerk does that on behalf of the council, and then the city manager advocates and brings forth appropriate legislation that she believes to add- manager advocates and brings forth appropriate legislation that she believes to advocate for on behalf of the administration.
Uh, madam clerk?
I think a suggestion, a suggestion would be, going forward, is that when the council directs, they direct the clerk and not the attorney to write the legislation, and I would work with the attorney. Like, that's where, that's what happened before, was that the attorney was directed. So, that was my assumption, is that she was going to put it in routing, same as anyone else. So, when the council directs, maybe they direct the clerk to amend the code, to write organs, and then I work with Sarah, and then I will put it forward. I just misunderstood and was waiting for Sarah.
Well, I don't know if I fully agree with that either, because I, like, there's specific context for when you want to draft legislation, that I want to review it for case law and precedent and some other pieces to that. So, I don't understand why there's an issue with, I draft it and then send it to the two sponsoring, that the draft for consideration to the two sponsoring city council members, and then they coordinate with the city clerk. Once they like the draft, they may want to tweak it and, or edit it to their, you know, for their concept and send it back to me, and then once they like it, to send it to the clerk to be placed upon the agenda.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That makes a lot more sense to me, because you're the, as the city attorney, then if we wanted to direct legislation to be drafted, that would be the job of the city attorney. And then, once that's all ready, then to bring it back to us and have us send it to the clerk, because the clerk doesn't need to be involved until it's ready. If that makes sense to me?
Another factor is, say the, say our manager is bringing forth something, and what, I believe what she would end up doing is, they've got the software program Agenda Quick and routed to the different departments that they think should comment on it or give data on, or whatever. And I, I don't know if that's something we want to figure out, how to include that process in there, of getting it routed to, say, different department heads as needed, or do we want it to just?
I'm.
Yes, councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm sorry to clarify, so you're saying you think there should be a way to get draft legislation from the attorney to where the department heads can see it?
Well, I'm just saying, I know that with the manager, that's how often things will go, that it will get routed to different department heads. You know, is there a financial aspect? Well, let's get financed to look at it, you know? I'm just saying, I think that's the process the manager goes through.
Right.
Do we want to figure out a way to do that as well, or just bring it back to the council and we'll go from there?
Well, if I may?
Yeah.
In, in the past, so with the camping legislation that the attorney brought forward during her report, when I requested that, I said, "I would like support to have the attorney draft legislation with whoever she deems necessary," which at that time was the chief of police and whoever else. And so, that was, you know, her, I just gave her like that purview of, you know, use whoever you need to use with that to, you know, talk about what needs to happen. And then, from there, when it's ready, then she brought it back to me. And now, if I'm continuing the process, I would, you know, go through it, make sure it's what I'm looking for, and make sure that whoever supported me in it is good with that as well, and then forward that to the clerk with my approval and with the sponsors, other sponsors' approval, and then the clerk would place it on the agenda. That, that is what I understand the process to be. And so, that's the same process we went through with that previous item, and it was ignored and denied.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to kind of think conceptually the workflow for this. So, city council requests legislation, we need to ask the attorney for that, the attorney comes up with a draft, then it comes back to the council members that request the legislation, just make sure I got this right, and then it goes to the city clerk to propel the agenda and to be, and to come forward. But what about the part of the city manager or the city departments? At, at what point do they get involved with the process for that? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure I got this workflow right.
If I may?
So, councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what I was saying is, when I asked for that legislation to be drafted, I told the attorney, or directed the attorney to bring in whoever needed to be part of that. So, before it's even on the agenda, it's been overseen by the chief of police and whoever else needed to be involved. So, by the time it gets on the agenda, it's already been looked at by them, and it's not at that point where they would say, "Wait, you know, we need to take this off and fix something." And so, if it was something that, well, and I think the manager works with the attorney anyways on things like that, it's not, they don't wait until it goes on the agenda quick to fix it. It goes on the agenda quick when it's ready, if that's my understanding.
So, if I can just reiterate, so just to confirm, so it goes from, so if the city attorney's, let's say we have legislation we want brought forward, the city attorney would then, under her staff, work with the city manager, who then works with the different departments, and then it comes back to the city council members that requested it to be approved, and it goes to the city clerk to go on the agenda? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, and also, if I may?
Uh, councilmember Graver?
Hudson.
Oh, sorry, councilmember Hudson. I'm looking this way and seeing Gray.
I know, I did it, I did it last meeting, it's okay. It means you need a nap. No, I wasn't meaning that, I was joking. Um, okay, so, I wanted to agree with what councilwoman Graver's saying, is that when we, per, how I'm, how I'm seeing what is in code, is that the clerk is responsible to bring forth legislation that was sent to her from the council in the meeting with the city manager. And the reason that the mayor is consulted beforehand is because he single-handedly can bring something onto the agenda without a second, right? So, the clerk gets legislation from two council members at a time, then the mayor can give legislation by himself without a second, and then the city manager would bring forth legislation from the departments. Okay? So, then, the other thing that I'm confused about is that in the emails that was sent specifically to Councilman Josh on April fifteenth from the clerk, it states that the manager, the mayor, and the clerk hold agenda-setting meetings. Well, if per code, the mayor is just supposed to be consulted with, then why is he a part of an agenda-setting meeting? Because that just, that doesn't seem like what the, what the code is saying. It's saying that the city clerk and the city manager consult with the mayor, and then they set the agenda. So, I guess, I guess also that part is confusing to me as well, because then the two council members that put forth legislation aren't asked to be in that meeting, and neither is department heads who bring forth legislation per code. So, I just want to clarify that as well, or ask for clarification on that. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that concern, but I would like to solve the first one first, if that's okay. So, that process we laid out, is that, I mean, that's, it follows code, and I, if the city clerk has anything to add?
Okay. Madam Clerk?
So, in the process that you're talking about, it makes sense. I mean, I agree with it, but it's a process that works well. But once it comes to me, it doesn't just get on the agenda. I mean, after we've done the first part you guys are all talking about, it goes in through the routing process, and at the end is where we have the agenda-setting meeting with the mayor and with Colby. So, what would happen is exactly what you're saying, but when it comes to me, I would just put it into Agenda Quick, and it would go on its normal routing system, which is, clarify if I'm wrong, Colby, what's, who's first? I'd forgotten.
Well, for the city manager administration of government, I've got the role of the department director submits to my assistant for clerical errors and refinements, make sure the math maths. Then it goes on to the finance department and Gina reviews for financial accuracy and accounts. Then it goes on to legal, Ms. Heath reviews it for any legal review, and then it comes to me for final approval, and that's when I transmit, transmit that legislation to the city clerk to be put on the agenda. And if I have any issues, if I would need to pull something after that, then I would contact her directly in the department and ask that to be pulled before it be noticed to the public, so we could correct any errors.
Um, did you? I just want to make sure that we're understanding that even when it comes to me, it still follows the same route after. If I were to put it into Agenda Quick, it would go the same route that city managers or Colby was just talking about. So, it would go from me and follow the same route to the end. So, it wouldn't just automatically be put on the agenda, it would be up for review. Just so we understand, it's not just going to be there, that's all.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you for that clarification. I, that's fine with me, I think that makes sense to have it go through everybody after it's ready. And it also makes sense to me that the attorney wouldn't be the one putting it on Agenda Quick, because then, like she was saying, the attorney's not supposed to be sponsoring anything, or biased, or, you know, picking and choosing which thing she wants to put on the agenda. So, it has to come back to the sponsor, who would then send it to you, and then you put it on Agenda Quick, and then it goes through the rest of the process. So, if that is the process that we were going with, can we request that those items be finished putting through the process that we have outstanding?
I have one, just have one piece of legislation at this point that I would be working with Sarah on, and that would be, it wouldn't be the camping one, it was the one before that. I think it's the one you referenced.
The one that we were, okay. So, right now, we've emailed that back to you, and it's been approved by councilwoman Hudson and myself, and so the next step is to put that on Agenda Quick, is that correct? Okay. And so, thank you.
Yes.
If I may?
Uh, yes, madam attorney?
Um, I just wanted to point out that that addresses the question, so there's lots of checks and balances in this. So, while I do the legal review and draft the legislation within the scope of it, then that is submitted to the council members to understand their intent and scope is whether or not that was achieved in that initial drafting, and then giving that to the clerk, then she can review it with her, and then make sure the city manager is fully aware of it and involved and engaged as well in finance and all the pieces. So, there's several layers of review in that process, which is what I'm the most comfortable with. Just as, you know, so that does address the mayor's concerns, whether or not department heads review anything that the city attorney would draft, be directed to draft, to give to the sponsors.
Okay. Councilmember Hut, Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also just going to ask the clerk, for clarification, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to word this correctly, for clarification that when the city manager and the city attorney, basically what I'm saying is, is that when, when we were getting those packets, I'm trying to think about the name of those packets, that we were getting that said like what the council had requested, and then when we had requested it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel requested items?
Counsel requested items, yes, okay, thank you. That was simple. Counsel requested items packet, this is why I had brought up previously, that I thought it would be smart of the council to have the attorney have a separate thing of the council requested items than what we were requesting of the clerk. And the reason is, is because there's a lot of times when the council will direct the city attorney to investigate something, or draft legislation, or to look into something, and then our attorney will give us legal advice pertaining to that situation, and then we will choose to not bring that forward. And then what happens is that it doesn't get checked off, because it was never brought forward, but it wasn't brought forward because we, as council members, decided not to bring it forward, not because the attorney wasn't doing it. And so, not that, not that the city clerk had bad intentions of that, but I think that what's happening then is, a lot of the attorney stuff isn't getting checked off, because we are choosing not to bring it forward, instead of her having her own council checklist of what we requested, and then hers can say, you know, directed, directed to not proceed, or chose not to proceed, you know what I mean, like in her own terms? And then, the clerk can have the one, that's just what we've requested of her specifically. Does that make sense? Because not everything is always going to come forward, if that, if that makes any sense. So, that's why I brought that up before.
Yes.
And I might go ahead and address the, my role as consultant, I guess, as a consultant with, with the agenda, is, I think part of what ends up happening is, the clerk and the manager are working through legislation, et cetera. I usually have other knowledge, like, hey, the Seroma kids want to come on this date, the mayor's managers meeting, we talked about this, and this is coming up, and so that, I'm consulted to kind of discuss, okay, when does it make sense? If we've got a whole bunch of kids here, we don't want to necessarily have two attorneys coming to present that same night or something, you know, just trying to figure out what makes sense for meetings. But that's, so that's kind of my role, is consulting, if that makes sense to council. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, your role is to be consulted with, but not to be on an agenda-setting team? I just want to clarify that, to make sure that we're understanding.
Or my role is as a consultant on that team. I, I, you know, it's, it's either a phone call or a meeting, but I know that I don't set the agenda, if that's what you're trying to get at. Councilmember Hudson?
I'm not, I'm literally not trying to get at anything, I'm trying to clarify that per code, I think that's what we're doing in this entire meeting, is we're trying to get to the bottom of, what does code say, and then what we're doing to make sure that everybody's following code. So, I'm not trying to do anything here, I'm just trying to say, the code says that you're consulted with, and then the city manager and the city clerk come together to make the agenda, to create the agenda. So, I'm not sure what part of that I'm creating anything from. I'm just clarifying that that's what the code says, and I'm asking if this council's going to adhere to the code or not.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Understand and appreciate the comments that are being made. If, if council members want to change, our job is to review the roles of the manager, the clerk, and the attorney. If you want to make changes to the code, then this is probably the time to request that. And so, I have a, it's kind of just a clerical thing that needs to be updated. On section five, four, five, and six, we need to update the pronouns, because they all relate to he. The city manager, he, the city clerk, he, the attorney, he. So, as, just as a, you know, kind of, it's not a review of the roles, but it's just a review of the wording. So, again, if people want to, you know, comment about, you know, what is the role of the mayor in this, and if we want to change what the roles are, then this is the time to do it.
Councilmember Alcántara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the comments of the previous speaker. Yeah, I did recognize, there's a lot of old time, old time usage of, he does this and he does that, so certainly that, that could be fixed. I think on the other task at hand is just maybe have our attorney talk about what consultation potentially looks like. I mean, to me, the manager and the clerk, you know, after they hear the Seroma kids need to be on the agenda, this person's coming to this, that they're going to be the ones that finalize an agenda, I think is what two oh four one hundred really points out, and that it's not going back to the mayor for final approval or anything like that. That it's just to you, any mayor sets forth, here's what, what the consulting role, whether that's an in-person meeting over the phone, on email, whatever, here are the things I know about, here are the opportunities and the things that exist. And then, when the agenda is finalized, that it's finalized by the manager and the clerk. I don't know if the city attorney can help us out and how it, how we can split hairs any, any other way, but I think it's just a matter of making sure that nothing, and I'm not accusing it's, that anybody has any kind of veto power, or anybody's keeping anything off the agenda, and make sure that it is indeed the, the manager and the clerk, after consultation, that set the agenda. Thank you, and I'll wait for Sarah to chime in if she wishes.
Yes.
Madam Attorney? Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, I think what the hangup might be, that there's the definition between prepared the agenda and what the content of the agenda is. And both of those items are addressed by PMC Code 2.04.100. So in the preparation of the agenda is solely done by the manager and the clerk, after consultation with the mayor, which the mayor explained he didn't, doesn't set the agenda, but highlights, you know, special items on behalf of the city that should be included in the agenda. I think the concern then is regarding what is on the content of the agenda and if things get excluded or put forward. And Codeberry clearly says that the agenda shall include, that means it must include any discussion items that were requested in writing and signed by the mayor, like, so the mayor has the sole ability to put something on, or to council members. So while it is prepared by the manager and the clerk with consultation with the mayor, the content must include any discussion item requested in writing by the mayor or two council members, regardless of how it's prepared by the manager and the clerk. That content is required by code, if that helps.
All right, councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to ask why our Councilwoman Alcantara and I submitted a piece of paper clarifying our council member agenda item request form around the same time that you and Councilwoman Cooper had submitted this. So I'm wondering why that also wasn't included in here, but just the email that I sent that was apparently confusing.
So what is the questions about the paperwork?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Graver, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think she's addressing the issue that I addressed in the beginning of the agenda at the approval, where she and Councilwoman Alcantara had talked to Madam Clerk about the confusion about what they were asking for and requesting, and so they clarified it, and it sounds like it was the same day that yourself and Councilwoman Cooper requested what we're discussing at the moment. And it was overlooked or ignored, is what it sounds like. And I think she's asking, if I may, why that didn't get placed on the agenda and this was placed on the agenda instead or besides.
Councilmember Hudson?
Uh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry, can the clerk please repeat that in her microphone? I wasn't able to hear what she said.
I said, Madam Clerk, the answer for that question, that's all. I have nothing to add at this point.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Okay, councilmember Hudson?
Okay, I just want to put it on the record then, that the clerk is refusing to answer the council's question. And also, I also want to clarify that the reason that this is a concern is because unlike typical items, we cannot just add an executive session if it was requested by the clerk to have a review because it wasn't properly publicly noticed, and that's why it's a concern that this was continually ignored. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I appreciate some of the comments that are being brought forth by the council members. However, you know, the, the title of this new business is review of the role of the city clerk, the city manager, and not the city attorney. It's not, not having anything to do with what the city clerk did not do, or the attorney did not do, or the manager did not do. We're here to review what's on the piece of paper, what the roles of these three individuals are that work for the council. And it's not to, you know, point fingers and say, you didn't do this and you didn't do that, why is this not on the agenda? That's a totally different subject than what we have before us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Respectfully, sir, if we're talking about their roles, that's their duties, which is what they're doing or not doing. So that's exactly what we're discussing.
Yep. Also, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. However, we're not doing an evaluation of the clerk. We're doing a review of the roles. And what you are bringing forth is not part of, you're asking why the clerk did not put this on there. If that pertains to the roles of the written paper that we have, that's fine, but I don't think that we should be talking specific. So I brought this forth on this date, and the clerk has refused to do this kind of stuff. If, if you want to change the way the roles are on the written piece of paper, that's fine, but we're not doing an evaluation of the three members that work for us. We're doing a review of the roles.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Cooper, the reason that we're not doing an evaluation currently is because the clerk's office refused to put it on the agenda as requested. And also, we are talking about a review of the role in the job, and we're saying what the job is and why isn't the job being done. If somebody doesn't want that out in the open, then they should do their role in their job. Because if our city manager or our city attorney wasn't doing their role, we would be discussing that right now. You and the mayor put forward the roles of the city manager and the city attorney. So if you would like to now discuss their roles, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I brought up the process for getting an item on the agenda, because that's part of the role. And so, in order to understand if we went by the process correctly or not, that's why I clarified that. And so I'm saying, well, if that is the process, as we have clarified, if that is the role and how the agenda works, then it didn't happen here. So I'm calling out a discrepancy in what we've just discussed the roles should be. I think it is very applicable to what we're discussing.
And, you know, I guess part of my goal was to have a discussion about the roles of all of the, the three employees that work for the council. Figured this was probably a good time, we've got, you know, a new manager, and let's talk about it. And I think some of these discussions have been helpful to kind of clarify, okay, what should the legislative process be, who handles what when? So, you know, I think that is, at least some of that is happening. Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I, yeah, I think it does, does definitely help. And I would, I would almost recommend that we have like a flow chart, just to help us all understand, you know, kind of how this goes, because it looks like, you know, and I, and I appreciate that there is redundancy there, where legislation will go to the city manager essentially twice, it sounds like. So it goes as a draft, and then when it's finalized by the, by the city council members that approved it, it goes in Agenda Quick, which then goes through the process again. One of the questions I had was Agenda Quick, I mean, is that, I'm assuming that's a pretty complex, you know, piece of software that tracks everything. Would, is that something that, that would be capable or make more sense to have them entered into Agenda Quick earlier on in the process? And, but it doesn't require, because what I don't want to have happen, is I, I don't think it's appropriate for the city attorney to be putting things into that, that software. But would it, is that something that's trackable, where it's all like an email format, but it's still tracked by the software, where it would make more sense to put it in there more or less in the beginning? Because, I mean, my one thought too, another agenda item that was requested was to have, who requested, oh, what was it? It was the terminology, who requested what to be put on, onto the, onto legislation, was, was to have that be made public? Was I, did I do that right? I remember, I think it was.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify what he was referring to?
Yes, Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, I asked back in October for legislation to be brought forward. That was sponsorship forms, so that every item that was put on the agenda would have the sponsors listed, and then per code, that it was changing the code. So it was something we had to do. And that there was an online tracking system on the website for when legislation was submitted, and so that the, the public and the council could make sure that it was going in the order it was supposed to, and that we weren't losing track of any of those things.
Deputy Mayor Tudor? Thank you for that clarification. I can remember the terminology that was used there, but I was just wondering if Agenda Quick has the ability to do that, where it can kind of kill two birds with one stone? And how it'd be trackable, and obviously it wouldn't be changing the code yet, but I mean, at least it would give us the, the framework to do that. Just kind of thought of it.
Okay, councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I also had asked this, for this about two and a half months ago, maybe three months ago, one, two, three, four, five agenda items to be council-supported, to be added to the next agenda, that were missed, I guess. So I guess I can resubmit those now, and then at the end of this meeting, and then some of them have already passed, so that's kind of sad, but then hopefully the rest of them can finally make it on an agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Madam Attorney?
Part of the, of my goal, we'll see how well I did it, because I just did it over the weekend, is to highlight some of the, I won't say natural tension, but, you know, just because we have separate purposes and that checks and balances occur with the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. So I, I call them potential areas of conflict, and then try to break them down into function areas. So I know it's not a flow chart exactly as Councilmember Tudor requested, but just sort of highlighting, you know, how the chain of command works, legal compliance, records management, elections and public notice, council meeting procedures, drafting legislation, legal advice to council. So that might be of some assistance as well. Code can be silent on occasional things, but I try to match the code as much as possible.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the attorney for that clarification. Maybe it would be important for us to go through the questions remaining for further discussion, that leaves the code blank, on page five that the attorney provided us in this packet, so that maybe we can, as a council, think about if there's anything we want to do to make the code more clear about the direction that the council is wanting to go. How do the roles relate to the FOIA and records request process? Incorporating these roles, the city manager has implemented a policy for records request procedures. So it sounds like that's been changed from going to the city clerk to now the city manager. So maybe we could get an update about what that's going to look like for us now, and for the community and the public.
Madam Manager?
Procedurally, for the public and public records requests, it will change nothing on the user's end. What it now does, it's routed to the city manager's office for dispersment. So they'll come into my office, we'll take a look at the public records. It might be a contract for a public works project. I'll take a look at that, we'll head it over to Public Works Department, they'll submit the, or they'll take care of the contents of that public records request, then they'll submit to legal for legal review of, well, we'll, we'll do the redactions as well, but then Ms. Heath will look for any legal gotchas, and then we'll fulfill that public records request. In reality, as I said before, most of these public records reside in my office, they don't reside in the clerk's office. That's why they start with me first now, and then anything that pertains to council legislation would be routed to the clerk's office.
And if I may?
Yes, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, I just wanted to supplement. The value with the records request process for both the city manager and then also from the clerk's office, by giving the city attorney a heads up in the very beginning, is it, it also helps when she means the gotchas, like, you know, individuals we might be in a lawsuit with, you know, they might have gotten denied something in discovery, and then try to do a go-around through a FOIA request. So the importance of city manager and city clerk communicating with me in the records request process is very helpful in that component, because I can be like, hey, that we're in a lawsuit, we're definitely, that's privileged information. And then that will just stop the process immediately before it gets too involved.
Good. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I think that that clarification and that change sounds very positive, so thank you to our city manager and our city clerk and our attorney for figuring that new policy out. The second one would, how do the roles interact for the agenda setting process? PMC Code 2.04.100, agenda and agenda packets. The agenda for each meeting shall be prepared by the manager and the clerk after consultation with the mayor. The agenda shall include any discussion items in writing and signed by the mayor or two council members' requests shall be made to allow the timeframes. So do we maybe want to clarify that, bring that forward as an item to be, a code amendment to be more clarified? Is that, do we all under, are we all in agreement and to understanding of that?
We've had discussion on it, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I felt like that was clarified for myself personally, but I'm not sure what the rest of the council thinks about it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Hudson?
We talked about the timing of legislation, that it was going to be, that it's posted on PMC 2.04.075. So then, that would lead us to question number four, does council engage with city employees? The PMC and the City Code of Ethics and Conduct of Elected Officials reinforce the city manager serves as the primary channel of communication between the council and the staff. Council members may not individually direct staff, but they are permitted to contact staff for the purpose of informational inquiries.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't realize my microphone was on, but I do have a question. I had, I've spoken previously and different managers in the past have, have told me different preferences on this, but I have a question for our manager. During budget time, right before we start getting into that, I like to meet with the department heads individually, and they usually take me kind of on a tour of their department and tell me what they're hoping for in the next budget, whether or not we can get that for them or not, and then just kind of give me an update on what's going on in their department. And I know that now we'll hopefully be having regular updates, it'll be really nice. But in the future, if I would like to continue that, is that something you want me to coordinate with you, or is that something I can reach out to them and we can do on our own time? Or what would that look like?
Madam Manager?
Please reach out to the directors directly and schedule any meetings or walkthroughs that you'd like to at their convenience. Obviously, operational workflow is top priority for the city, so if a meeting can't occur on a Tuesday but can occur on a Wednesday, then please defer to their schedule. You are more than welcome to include me on those tours, I might be interested in going as well and can help answer questions. And then also during, for upcoming, as we are going to be presenting more with the directors and from the council, budget season is something that I was looking at, is having individual departments with finance come up and discuss their various departments and where they stand, so that some of these questions can be answered as a whole rather than individually.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always interesting, because, you know, the folks in attendance here tonight are pretty inside baseball, not just up here on the dais, but the ones in the audience as well. I have all kinds of friends and people that tell me, oh, he works for you, he works for you, he works for you. It's like, no, I don't have any he's that work for me, by the way. There's only three people that work for the council, and I think some of the public, maybe some listening to Big Cabbage Radio, don't really realize that. They don't realize that department heads and police chiefs and fire chiefs and, and finance folks and other people do not work for us. They work for the city manager, she works for us, and that's how the process goes through. I think Councilwoman Graver taking the additional step of really meeting with department heads is something to be applauded and, you know, grabbed, and she puts in that kind of time to go, to go meet with folks and see what they want to do. But I think just as a general statement, just the thought process that, you know, Palmer has 75, 77, 79, whatever the number today is, employees, three of them work for the city council. I just wanted to make that clear to folks that may not know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. The next remaining question for further discussion in the packet is, what access do city council members have to city records and informational requests? It says, A, on behalf of the city attorney only, I receive It says, A, on behalf of the city attorney only, I receive wide varying requests for information, references, and other inquiries. I do not ask for a council member to fill out a records request for that information, or the clerk, city of Palmer summary, or the manager, sorry, or an employee for that matter, if information is not privileged, confidential, or a privacy concern, the information is usually found through other public means and can be quickly distributed to the requesting elected official. It is my view that the job of the city attorney is to prevent legal situations and liability and to provide the council with situational awareness of questions as presented. So is the count, my question specifically then, to clarify what the clerk's office is, is the council requested to, are they allowed to, to the city manager and the clerk come and ask for city records and informational requests, or does that need to be done through a FOIA?
I think it would depend on what it would take, we can from the city manager, but I think it would depend on what it was. I mean, generally, we just provide information, and when I provide information, depends what the information is, I try to provide it to all the council members so that they all have the same information at the table. So that's, I feel strongly about that, depending on what it is, it mostly that. I don't, I hope you.
Madam Manager?
My assumption that any record that would be made available to the public should be made freely to the council, not necessarily as a public records request. If there is a request to see a contract, we can send it to you directly. We are a partner with your branch, so it would make sense to not have the FOIA request unless the city attorney has advice otherwise, but generally, if it's a relatively easy task to fulfill, it would be better just to fulfill it directly.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Then can I ask the city clerk why Councilman Alcantara and I were required to FOIA request the recalls that were put in against us a couple of months ago?
Madam Attorney, or Madam Clerk, sorry.
That's the same process in the public, because that would be something a member of the public would ask in that way. I mean, unless Sarah has something else, I don't think that, I think that was the right direction, to ask for them to fill out a public records request the same way we asked the manager, or the mayor to fill out, something like that, because that's, that's put forth by the public. So I leaned more toward conservative, to have them fill out the request, unless Sarah has something else to say.
Madam Attorney, do you want to comment on anything?
That would be, I mean, the code doesn't speak to that, that's an internal process. The content that the city manager and the city clerk would have is an internal item. So I, I mean, I think that they have the ability to make that determination, just as I would on what is released when, whether it's a courtesy release or they want it to be a public information's request. I think as long as there's a justification for either of those determinations, that's in there, over.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the clarification. Number six is, how does the role of the deputy clerk work? The deputy clerk serves as a hybrid role, operating under the direct supervision of the city clerk while also functioning as a city employee under the authority of the city manager. This dual structure ensures that the deputy clerk supports the clerk's responsibilities, such as records management and election administration, while adhering to a broader administration policies and personal regulations overseen by the city manager. Do we think that's working well?
Councilmember Alcantara?
I would have actually no idea how it's working, but I'm just curious if, if that is how it is at the Matsu Borough and Wassila and other places. I mean, it, it seems there's a potential that a deputy clerk could become our fourth employee of city council, but I guess I, you know, I don't want to put Benji on the spot, but I don't know, you know, you have a leg in each camp, maybe it's, maybe it's working out swimmingly and that's the way it's supposed to be, and maybe in other local government jurisdictions, it's not done this way. I'm not, I'm not sure, so I'm not sure how it's working.
If I may, could I, for some further clarity?
Sure, Madam Attorney.
First, these are not inclusive questions, these are just questions that I have received over the past, you know, couple of years, so I just thought I'd throw them out there, hence the, any other questions. Second of all, regardless of who the city clerk or the deputy clerk, but just in discussing those roles, having, you know, ultimately what that says then is the city clerk is the supervisor, and I was kind of having to dig into this a little bit with the city manager, supervisor, but you could have a situation, I'm not saying this is even related to, but say this is duplicated somewhere else, you could have a situation where there's issues with the deputy clerk, or you could have the city clerk tasking the deputy clerk to do something that, you know, the deputy clerk could have an issue, we've seen those come up in the lower 48. And this way, this, because it's a hybrid, the clerk isn't in the position, I believe, to hire or fire, they have to get that clarified through the city manager. So it does kind of throw, for better or worse, an extra layer in there of kind of insight and protection, because there could be so much influence for a city clerk and a deputy clerk together, and we've seen that turn out negatively in the lower 48 in some different situations. So I just wanted to, you know, if you start to look at the checks and balances that could offer the hybrid, that might be why that was originally designed that way, to offer some protection.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, this is a question for the city attorney. Do you think that legally it's more constructive or it's better for the deputy clerk to be hybrid with the city manager, or do you think it would be better for it to be hybrid with the city council as the clerk's position?
I mean, honestly, that's kind of a complicated question, I think there's pros and cons to both, and that is something that really should be deeply researched before it was considered changed. I'm sure that there was some legislative intent on why that was initially structured the way it was, and so I don't know exactly what that legislative intent is, and I don't know if that is the best model or not. I can't answer that, sorry. And I would need to research that more.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably a question for yourself or Councilmember Cooper or Councilmember Erby, but how long has the city of Palmer had a deputy clerk?
Way after your time.
It existed back in early 2000s? We did not have a deputy clerk.
We didn't actually have a clerk in the 1990s, you know. All right, are we done with the committee of the whole then?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just make sure our thoughts are together here. So it sounds like as, it sounds like the idea is we're not, is the attorney should not have to put things into agenda quick, that she's separated from that process, also that we're going to be looking to see if agenda quick might be a good answer for putting things in earlier on in the process, that way it's trackable and, you know, but of course, that's if it can do that well, and if it's the right, you know, tool for the job. Is there anything missing that we had discussed that we were looking at as far as processes goes or roles?
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to ask if the manager, the clerk, or the attorney, or the deputy clerk had any clarifying questions for us, or any thoughts?
Madam Manager?
I don't have any questions for the council, but as always, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me directly.
So I've worked in both jurisdictions of the borough and the city of Wassila, so I can tell you that the deputy clerk does not answer to council. The deputy clerks on both jurisdictions answer directly to the city clerk and the borough clerk. So I can tell you that, because I've worked in both those jurisdictions. I think it would be a nightmare to answer to the council and the city clerk, because there's already one, and then if you add seven more, I worked for three judges before, and that was interesting to juggle. So when you start adding numbers, it makes the position very difficult, therefore it makes retention harder for you to retain an employee. So that's what I have to say about that. And I think my, I love my job and my position, and it works out swimmingly the way it is now, so I don't know if that helps at all.
Madam Clerk, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Madam Attorney, did you have anything else to add?
No, that was enough from, I've been living and breathing this all weekend, so no.
Okay. All right then, there's no objection, we'll come out of committee of the whole. Next is record of items placed on the table. Madam Clerk?
Document from Jackie Goforth, election document from the clerk's office, and a report from Attorney Heath.
Okay. All right, next is audience participation, we'll open audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, you have three minutes.
Hello, hello. We are in city council, it's Jackie Goforth again, I'm not, I'm not.
No, no, it's off.
Sorry, that's my bad.
So now it's off, yeah, so. There you go.
Okay, all right. Jackie, go forth again, and I'm not done putting items on the table. Get my glasses so I can read. In 2022, the Anchorage Daily News had an article that said, "An unusually large number of early votes were cast in this election," city officials say. "They estimate the cost of holding the special election to remove three city council members at between $8,000 and $10,000." Okay? So I have a FOIA request for the costs associated with the special election that recalled Brian Daniels, Sabrina Combs, and Jill Valerius. The reason why is, if you read the Matsu Sentinel, she says that the clerk is reporting that this special election for one person is $18,000. Now, I know that inflation's high, and I know that the cost of things go up, but how is it two times plus? So here's another one that says, "I want the financial records of the costs associated with the special election held on May 20th to recall one Palmer city mayor, the total is quoted as being $18,000 by the clerk." When it comes to having, having a trust factor, you can't push out funny numbers, okay? The public just goes, what? How can you remove three at less, more than half, at less than half the cost? I'm sorry, I was at a destination wedding and I just got back this morning, and I've been running around gathering signatures, it's not that hard, by the way, and so I've had absolutely no time to look at some of these numbers, but some of these numbers are super funny. But I want you to know something, let's go back to books, okay? The whole thing started, my actual haranguing, my actual haranguing started, because in 2000, in the year 2000, legislature in the United States passed a law called the Child's Internet Protection Act, and it was to keep children off the internet in libraries from being able to access porn sites, okay? And the library was refused to do it. They said it was censorship, okay? It was a violation of First Amendment rights to have children protected from internet porn sites. I'm not joking, you can look it up. So the, the United States said, no, we're taking your funding away if you do not keep children safe. And the American Library Association and ACLU sued. And in 2003, the lawsuit is a Supreme Court case, it's called United States versus American Library Association, and they lost. There is a law, it's called the obscenity law, that you cannot put obscene material before children. Now, there are so many librarians out there and people who fight this and say it's censorship that say there's no such thing as obscenity in the libraries, and that is also not true, because 56 books were removed from the Matsu School Board. Matsu School Board removed 56 books from the school libraries, do you remember that? It created a huge problem because they were going to look at them. Only 49 went back. Seven of them, seven of them were evaluated as being obscene, legally.
That's your time.
Okay, thank you, I'll harangue you again next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Kelly Schumets, Palmer Chamber. I just want to say thank you guys for all your hard work, first off. Secondly, I hope you guys all made it out to Friday Fling this last Friday, it was amazing, we had the Matsu School District out there, they did their staff appreciation, we had a huge influx of people downtown Palmer, it was incredible, the food trucks and the vendors said it was probably the best Friday Fling they have had. It was Colony Days level out there. So hopefully we can continue that trend throughout the summer, we have Colony Days coming up, the 13th, 14th, and 15th. Hope you guys can participate in that, and if there's anything that we can do, let us know, or any plans that you guys want to see happen during that time, we are open to any ideas, and thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. While you were having lengthy discussion, taking a look at the role of the council and a number of other people, manager and so on, I looked at the agenda, and I just wanted to bring attention to this. If you look at the agenda for tonight, it would appear that almost all, except one, of those items on that agenda were really presented by the manager. And I think that's the case in most evenings when you meet. So those items, however, don't seem to always receive the same amount of attention as the one or two items that you bring forth. I'm not denigrating what you bring forth, I'm just saying that the business of the city in great part is the set of items provided by the manager. Over and over, we hear that said, this is a manager council, and the council has an incredibly important role, because you approve the items that are presented there. Then you have an opportunity, and I've gone on, done a little research, looking at a variety of ways in which the interaction of the members that you've talked about, a council, manager, and a strong manager, council type of arrangement are done, and what is done here in Palmer is not so very different than is what's done in many other places with slight variations. But the question I propose is, how much time do you want to spend doing the business of the city, knowing that there are important considerations of your process that you want to address? And when do you want to do that? Do you want to do the business? Do you want to do the process? Do you want to separate it up with a special meeting, et cetera, so that that business is transparently done and the people who are watching this are saying, yeah, look at that, they took care of business? That's, to me, the important thing. So I just wanted to bring attention back to the primacy of the manager's role, particularly in the agenda setting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for audience participation? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close audience participation. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to repeat these items that I had asked for council support for, so that our new city manager could hear them, and if they want council support again, I don't, it doesn't, I don't care, I just, they were council-supported before, and I just want to bring them up as things that we had asked for. I would like to request council support that an agenda item be added to the next council meeting to receive an update on the current status of the funding application process for the new public safety building. Given the significance of this project for our community, it's crucial for the council to be informed about where we stand with the application, any potential funding sources, and the next steps moving forward, that will ensure that we are on the same page and can provide necessary support. The second one was to request council support in adding an item to the next agenda for a vote, that for the next six months, a department, each department head would be required to present to the council at least once per month. Those updates would include a summary of their current work, upcoming initiatives, and progress on ongoing projects within their respective departments. So I'm very happy that you've brought that. Um, so I'm very happy that you've brought that, um, forward. I was trying to have it in place before you started so that, um, there was more transparency already started for you when you got here, so I'm sorry that that didn't happen. Um, I would also like to request the council support in having the city manager and relevant department heads present within the next month the necessary information and cost estimates for paving an unpaved road in the city of their choosing to include any pertinent details regarding the needs and expected costs associated with the project. I also believe at that time, Councilman Cooper, um, please correct me if I'm wrong in what I say, um, had, uh, we had kind of altered it in conversation at that time to change it so that, um, we actually received like a list of the unpaved roads and the cost of all of them, um, to the council, um, so that we could see kind of where we were at and kind of start a conversation for the public on that moving forward. Am I correct in that, Councilman Cooper? Okay. And then, um, I also wanted to, um, say that Friday Fling was a blast. The Mac Shack sold out of their back, their mac and cheese wraps. So this week, my shout out is Grandma Ways, she got some new hot sauce, so y'all should try that out. So, um, and Mac Shack, I'm going to be back for you because you, you've gone sold out, so please save me a couple anyways. Um, but thank you so much for everybody coming out tonight and, um, I hope to see you all at Friday Fling again this Friday. Thank you.
Councilmember Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you kind of pointed out to me earlier tonight and by our citizens as well, via phone calls, via, you know, texts, other things, that, uh, there are certainly some picadilloes, irregularities in this last election that, um, caused people to not have the utmost confidence in what was going on. I think the biggest one was, uh, 389 total votes became 407, eventually became 398. The document that was handed out, the election breakdown document, I think handed out, definitely was sent to us and I think were copies available for the public, does a pretty good job of showing, you know, what occurred. Um, the reality of what occurred, and congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, 44.22% of folks said yes, 55.78% of folks said no, and, you know, there was a difference of 46 votes in what was reported, what was identified. And I appreciate, uh, Ms. Weller being here tonight to kind of, uh, add some, I think, validity to it. And it's, it's too bad that, um, that it didn't, you know, add up. I've done many, many things in my, uh, many, many years. What I have not done is worked for the division of elections or worked, uh, borough or city elections. So there's, I'm sure reasons why 389 becomes 407, becomes 398, but the reality for folks is that 196 people voted on Election Day. Uh, 202, when the final count was determined, voted early. And I believe, and the clerk is certainly correct if I'm wrong, that early voting went for at least two weeks and maybe two weeks plus on Monday preceding the Election Day. So, uh, there was ample opportunities for folks to show up and vote. Um, uh, the no side did tremendously well on the, uh, on the early voting, and, uh, that's great. And so I, I don't want to see those things go away. I do think there's some, uh, legitimacy to like, why is the price doubled? And maybe it's just a matter of, uh, you know, used to pay folks 12 bucks an hour, now we pay them 24, those type of things. Um, but I also think whether you have three names on a ballot or one name on the ballot, that's not going to change the cost. But what I think changes the cost is how many folks you have working, uh, which is probably a minimum required by law, how many folks you have working at it, um, on Election Day, and how many folks you have working during the early voting process. So, uh, so I'm sure there's ways to make sure it's run as smoothly as possible in October and that, uh, it, it does seem frustrating to the public that when you have 398 total votes and it takes several days to get results, but I think that's the process. I think that's what has to be followed and, you know, I, I know of a lot of people, uh, especially in this day and age now where, where half or more of the folks are voting before Election Day, there's a lot of frustration in, in the, just the timing of like, you know, give me 400 pieces of paper, I can give you who won in, you know, an hour, but, um, there's a little more to it than that. So I wanted to thank, uh, Madam Attorney for her, uh, great work. I hope it didn't ruin her Memorial Day weekend, uh, completely. Um, I do think it's a great document that she made, page document she handed out, um, hopefully also available to the public. I think that was great. Um, and it, it did help us tonight. I hope folks can just get along better, the city clerks, uh, with the attorneys, everybody with each other, uh, and we just, uh, try to, uh, continue to move through our agenda items and do the work of the city. I do think our, uh, city manager, Zirkle, in her, uh, one month on the job, has done great work. Uh, appreciate it very much and, uh, I appreciate your willingness to have department heads, um, come forth and, you know, and address us and, uh, make sure that we get our questions answered, just so for, for our own learning, oftentimes for me, for my own edification, but also so the public can learn as well, right along with us. And, uh, again, on Friday Fling, if you, uh, if you want the mac and cheese stuff, you better get there by 11:30. But Friday Fling, like, uh, the state fair and like many outdoor events, is very much a weather-driven situation. And just like on Saturdays at the fair when it's 65 and sunny and you, you can't, it's like you're walking down, uh, uh, central, or you're, you're walking down Broadway in New York City versus, uh, if it's 52 and raining, you're just not going to get as many people. But the difference between day one, Friday Fling, and day two was obviously enormous. I think, uh, a lot of that was people had a week, get their, get their legs back under them, but I also think Friday was a beautiful day. And so that, that certainly helped things out as well. So other than that, uh, I hope everybody has a, a good couple of weeks. Uh, school's out now, so be careful, slow down in every neighborhood. There's just a whole bunch of, uh, kids and trucks and, you know, uh, side by sides and stuff in neighborhoods where if you're not on your A game, there's just, uh, a lot of kids on bikes, trikes, running around, doing their thing, and it's, it's a beautiful sight to behold, but, uh, just make sure you keep it, uh, speed limit or lower around our neighborhoods. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on that note, I wanted to thank Public Works because the streets look beautiful and with all the new paint and striping and everything. Um, so hopefully that will help for the pedestrian crossings. Um, and I also just wanted to say thank you to the attorney for bringing forward that draft, uh, and emailing it to me and, um, I will be, now that we have the process figured out, I will be forwarding that to the clerk and hopefully we'll see that on an agenda soon.
Uh, Councilmember Erby?
Um, thank you, Ma, your, your honor. Um, I just want to say congratulations on, on, uh, remaining our mayor. I've, I've lived in Palmer for 50 years and Palmer's had its fair share of, let's say, colorful people. There, when I first moved here, there was a guy that used to drive around in his pickup truck with his big black dog sitting right next to him. It didn't matter what the weather was, 35 below, the wind blowing 50 miles an hour, his wife sat in the bed of the truck, wearing the blankets, keeping warm. And if you got too close to it, she would bark at you. Then, but most of these colorful characters, they're, they're political in nature. We had the guy that he had some kind of beef against a judge or government or something. But anyway, he had a Chevy van that he bolted a toilet to the top of, and he had like 500 pounds of plywood nailed to the side of his van with hand-painted signs where he complained about whatever, but it was gibberish, you couldn't understand it. We've had the man that stood out there for years, at the, the corner of the Glen Highway in Charlie Brown's. That's Palmer Chevron for, for new people. Um, with his anti, uh, "We need to impeach Obama" sign. And, uh, he, uh, he was really colorful. He appointed himself grand marshal over Colony Day parades and was at the very front with this, "We have to impeach Obama." And, uh, it, we, we thought he was harmless, but then he snuck the sign into the fair, which the fair is private property and they don't allow that kind of stuff. The man had a concealed weapon. We had Eugene Haberman. He used to come to our, most of our meetings and he would, uh, he was, wasn't combative, he wasn't accusatory, he wasn't insulting. He was very professional and he would, he would report on anything that he felt was, there was any infractions or missteps and anything like the Open Meetings Act and, uh, and things like that. He, he wanted to make sure that everything was above board. You know, even though I, I rarely knew what he was talking about, I, I, I miss Eugene. He, he was colorful, but he was sincere. He was a shining example of professionalism and decorum. You know, it, it was the way things should be done. But as with most things, sometimes these colorful characters, they can take a darker turn. We had a man who used to come to our meeting with a stack of papers. And he would sit and he would just randomly go to one of the pages and whatever complaint that he had on that page, he would just rattle off about that complaint. And when he was done with that one, he'd randomly go to another one and he'd keep that up for, for his three minutes. But we had to have an armed guard in the council chambers because he would bring things that were considered weapons, uh, you know, uh, African War Club and the, things like that. And I see that this tradition of colorful characters, it, it, it's, it's continuing. I've, I've been back on the council just for a few short weeks and so far I've been entertained by the colorful ponderings of lack of accountability, blackmail, shady dealings, misogyny, insurance fraud, and, uh, and, and we can add election interference and election fraud. The, um, Brad Hanson was criticized for designing a useful library that'll bring Palmer into the 21st century without council approval. But like Councilman Alcantara pointed out, that's not our job. The council, we're not architects, we're not engineers, we're not firefighters or policemen or garbage collectors. That's the job of the city manager and the city employees. Brad's job was to design a library. If he brought a Taj Mahal to us, then, uh, we, we could then voice our, our opinion and trim it back if need be. Brad doesn't need our permission to design a library, he needs our permission to build it. And speaking of Brad, I sat in this chair right here for 12 years. Brad sat in that chair over there for the entire 12 years that I was on the council. He was there before me and he was there when, after I left. Before he was a council member, he was on planning and zoning for years. And, uh, then after he left the council, he was in charge of community and development for almost 10 years. And then, take a look at this wallet here. It's photographs of former mayors of Palmer. You'll go see Councilmember, um, Cooper up there, you'll go see John Combs. But you see this man in the lower left-hand corner? That's Brad Hanson's father. He was mayor of Palmer and he was tragically killed while the mayor of Palmer. The Hanson family, and particularly Brad, has done more to make Palmer Alaska at its best. They've done more on accident than any of the colorful outside agitators bringing nothing but divisive negativity who insult our city workers. And, uh, we, we, that's not Palmer. We need more Brad Hanson's and less negativity, and we need more Mike Maders, and we need more Steve Carrington's. So again, Steve, congratulations and congratulations to Palmer.
Uh, alternate deputy mayor, Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have a couple, just a couple of things. I hope everybody had a, a great weekend. Two of the three days were phenomenal weather and I hope they paid appropriate homage yesterday to, you know, all of our, our fallen soldiers. Uh, and Mayor, I want to thank you for, uh, representing the city at the Memorial Day Ceremony. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo that, that thank you for assisting at that, that ceremony. Uh, thank you for Councilman, uh, Hudson and, uh, Councilman Alcantara for the resolution, uh, to recognize, uh, historic families and, and veterans. I also just want to say Friday Fling was amazing. Uh, it was an excellent event, a lot, I spoke with several vendors, even like one of the, when I was at Lions Club meeting and, and, uh, they said it was the best turnout they've had in a long, long time they could remember. So really great to see, especially the Palmer Circle Society was there. They're passing out old magazines from like the 70s and 80s and, oh boy, my kids had a field day with those. And, uh, it's just really amazing to see kind of how we went from just the early days, earlier days of Palmer to where we are now, how much things have changed but also stayed the same. So, uh, and also just wanted to give a shout out to them for their, doing other stories in stone. So what they do, the Palmer Circle Society does tours of the cemetery here in Palmer and they tell you stories of the people that are buried there, what they lived through and what happened. And my, uh, oldest daughter and I did that last year and it just downpoured rain, like we don't normally get here, just downpour. So I had an amazing ambiance, it was a, just a great event. And, uh, and I'm also excited for our work session on the 6th. It's going to be a great opportunity for us to work better as we're going through this process of, of how we work together as a council and, and, and also council staff, you know, how we can better serve the community. Um, and, and also just want to say thank you to, uh, people like, like Ms. Goforth, um, Ms. Hudgens and so forth. I, I think, um, we do need more volunteers, absolutely, but we also need people that hold us accountable because we are a government of the people, for the people, by the people. And it takes people to make sure that we're doing everything right because sometimes we may inadvertently do something incorrectly. We've done it before, you know, we, we may make a mistake here or there and we need everyone to be paying attention because ultimately, when we look at these election results, not only the people came out and voted, it's, you know, we don't make the news, you know, uh, we're not really top of mind for people and it's like the goal of our election. So it's really important that we have citizens that are like you all here or you all that are listening and watching to pay attention to us and make sure that we're doing things right because that is critical for our democracy. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo the comments about Friday Fling. My wife and I, well, we ate at La Fiesta and then walked through, which means we only bought food after that. But, um, it was, it was very good. We got to sit down and listen to the band and it, it was a very good Friday Fling. And we'll adjourn at 8:24.